Here.
Councilor Roebuck?
Here.
Mayor Portem Soltis?
Here.
Mayor Grassley?
I'm here, thank you. The invocation this evening will be from Mayor Portem Soltis. And then if you could also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please, Mr. Soltis.
I didn't realize it was my night, but I want to, I want us to, in spirit, hold hands and come together as a city to overcome all the obstacles that are facing us, natural and what have you. And I just think that as a group, as a city, as a collective unity, we can be better and better as time goes on. And I'm very hopeful of the future. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could rise, if you're able to, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first up, approval of the agenda, or are there any additions or deletions tonight? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to presentations. It is Suicide Prevention Week, the proclamation. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, council is scheduled to consider a proclamation recognizing Suicide Prevention Week. Whereas World Suicide Prevention Day is recognized internationally and supported by the World Health Organization on September 10th of each year, and National Suicide Prevention Week was September the 6th through the 12th of 2020. Whereas according to the National Center of Disease Control and Prevention in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 9.2 minutes, with 48,344 deaths by suicide in our country during 2018. Whereas in our country, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for 10- to 34-year-olds. It's the fourth-leading cause of death for people 35 to 54, and the 10th-leading cause of death in the United States overall. Whereas there are more than twice as many suicides in the United States as there are homicides. Whereas each person's death by suicide intimately affects at least six other people with over 250,000 newly bereaved each year. Whereas programs such as the Student Safety Program, OKTSA, and the Oakland County Youth Suicide Prevention Task Force offer educational programs and intervention. And whereas the Suicide Prevention Week is being recognized to promote reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths and the pain for those affected by suicide deaths. Whereas the City of Madison Heights recognizes suicide as a public health problem and suicide prevention as a community responsibility. Whereas far too many Michigan residents die by suicide each year, and most of these deaths are preventable. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Madison Heights do hereby designate September the 6th through the 12th, 2020, as Suicide Prevention Week in the city, and urge residents to take time to raise their awareness during the month of September to learn the warning signs and help prevent suicide by encouraging those at risk to seek life-saving help.
Thank you for that. Meeting is now open to the public. There's anyone from the public who wishes to speak? If you could let us know, if you could give your name, your address, or any affiliation with the city. And we do ask that you take a maximum of three minutes, please. Do you want to put up your hand if we can see you? Just notify us, let us know that you want to speak. Mr. Genderson, I see your hand is up. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for listening. My name is Josh Genderson. I'm the CEO of Holistic Industries. My address is a Washington DC address, 750 Third Street Northwest. I just simply wanted to update everybody on our progress and on our timeline. And, you know, thank everybody again for the support and just for being a great municipal partner. You know, I also want to thank everybody for taking the initiative to move forward on adult use or recreational. I think it's really important for the success of the program and the city and our project. As far as an update goes, the city has been really, really on top of reviewing everything, reviewing our permits, issuing our permits. We're obviously really excited to be moving forward. The timeline due to COVID has been bumpy and adjusted a few times, as you know. But we're slugging through it. There's been some torrential rain recently, which has caused some issues. The rains made it really hard for trucks to get onto the site and the dirt we need to get rid of, you know, to make space for the storm drain and the foundation. But we're doing everything we can to make up for lost time. Next week, weather permitting, we should be finishing the stormwater drains and continuing foundational work specifically for the retail portion, so we can get that over quick. In terms of timeline, sorry, there's some noise in the background. The current completion date sort of broken down. The shell is going to be up in January, the full shell of the building. The retail looks like it'll be completed and ready for inspection in February. Phase one of the grow and the processing facility, which is really the final phase, it's when, you know, everything gets built, gets inspected, you plant, is in March, mid-March. So that's our current update. And again, I just wanted to keep everybody apprised and thank everybody again for their patience.
Thank you for that update. To members of our audience, if you could please mute yourself if you are not speaking. I know we're all still getting used to the technology, but just it can get a bit distracting with the background noises, so we just ask everyone to be on mute. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak from the public? I am, oh, did I hear Mary Bush? Were you speaking?
Mary Bush.
Yes, okay, please go ahead.
I would like to, Mary Bush at 1117 East Hudson. I would like to remind all the council members to join the Friends of the Madison Heights Public Library, as well as the citizens. We are having an ongoing T-shirt sale, which can be accessed through our Facebook page, Friends of the Madison Heights Library. Also, we have an upcoming pop-up table at the Strolling Concert on October 3rd. And we're really looking forward to the continuation of the Friends. And thank everybody for their support. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? All right, I am not seeing anyone raising hands. Is anybody? No, okay, then we will, we'll be closing the portion of Open to the Public. Thank you for those who spoke. Next up, we have Communications, item one, we have a resignation. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, Elizabeth Bloomberg has submitted resignation from the Library Advisory Board. Staff recommends that council accept the resignation and declare the seat vacant.
Great, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilman Clark.
I'd like to move that the City Council accept the resignation of Elizabeth Bloomberg from the Library Advisory Board and declare the seat vacant.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Councilman Corbett? Was that you?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to accept the resignation of Elizabeth Bloomberg from the Library Advisory Board and to declare her seat vacant. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Roebuck?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley?
Vote yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we move to Area D, Reports. First up, number one, Director of Public Services. It's the Oakland County Local Road Improvement Program Cost Participation Agreement. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, for the past years, the city has successfully participated in the Oakland County Local Road Improvement Program, also known as LRIP, which is designed to assist local units of government with needed local road improvements. The program is based on a minimum 50/50 match between the city and the county. The city was successful in receiving $192,000 through this program to date. These funds have been used on much-needed road repairs on Whitcomb Avenue, Research Park, Tech Row, and East Lincoln Avenue. Oakland County is once again offering this program for 2020. We have been awarded the maximum grant amount of $81,493, which is based on a special formula for sectional concrete repairs on Whitcomb Avenue from Barrington to Dequender. The LRIP grant will be applied to our 2020 sectional repair project for this street, which will offset a total project cost of $436,000. Funds are budgeted and available for this project, and construction is scheduled for the summer/fall of 2020. Staff and I recommend city council approve the cost participation agreement and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Councilman Corbett?
I move that the council approve the cost participation agreement and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city. And I am referencing the 2020 sectional repair project.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor.
Councilor Roebuck?
My second.
Great, thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Roebuck?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley? Vote yes, motion passes. Thank you. Next up is item number two, Police Chief, Resolution for Supplemental Wage for City Employees Assigned to Active Duty Military. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, Police Officer Steven Workman currently serves our country as a member of the Michigan Army National Guard. Effective the end of September, he has been in voluntary order to active duty in support of the Border Mission of the United States Army for a period of 440 days. In support of our employees who choose to serve their country at significantly less pay, the city council is being requested to approve resolution authorizing a payment plan to assist those, including Officer Workman, who were called to active-duty military. The last occurrence of an employee being called to active duty was 2006, when the city council passed a similar resolution. In this particular case, the difference between Officer Workman's monthly city wage and monthly military wages is approximately $2,900 per month, or $35,000 per year. Staff and I recommend that city council approve this resolution and further move that all full-time employees who are called up to active duty from reserve duty through an order of the Armed Forces will be paid the difference between their base salary and the amount of overall compensation they are receiving on active-duty military.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilman Corbett?
Your Honor, I move that the council approve the resolution recommended by staff with relation to supplemental pay for city employees assigned to active-duty military service.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor.
Councilman Bliss?
I support.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Just a couple of quick points. I know we all got a letter from somebody inquiring about this yesterday or over the weekend. The, we did have this once before during one of the Gulf Wars. We had, I believe, one, one member of the police department who was dispatched in the, he served in the military police, as I recall. And I believe a second one was going to be and didn't get out of Dodge before the war ended. But the, it provides us, and I think it's something we, I think it's the least we can do as a community for the women and men among us who step forward to defend the country and ourselves and our families. Least we can do for them. Oh, the question had to do with the existing federal legislation and the protections that it might have for soldiers. It really dates back to a day back in the 30s and 40s, when people didn't so much have careers as they did jobs and just simply going off to fight a war for a few years and coming back and picking up at some other similar type of job was not a big deal. The things you had to worry about were foreclosure, garnishment of wages, that kind of thing. They were protected from that. Now, it's a little different. We need to, we need not only to ensure that the families are receiving full compensation in addition to the protections which are also offered by the federal law, but they're not, they don't lose time by having to defend the country for whether it's six months, a year, whatever it is. It was a rather extended period, as I recall, that one, that one officer who was gone. I'm going to say the better part of a year, not quite maybe. But anyway, it's a tremendous proposal. I certainly commend the staff for catching this and bringing it to our attention. And I certainly hope the council will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilor Roebuck?
I just have a question. I'm certainly going to be in support of this particular individual, but I'm wondering, do we have an idea, Mrs. Marsh, about how many, like, current employees are reserve-duty members of the military? I just, my mind goes to, like, if we have 10 people, all of a sudden get called up for duty for whatever reason, can, you know, the question at the bottom of this recommendation is that we do it for anybody who comes up, which is, I feel like it's fair, but I just wonder, like, are we putting, are we promising too much? Would we be in big trouble if we, if this actually came to fruition, there were many people?
Your Honor, that's a good question. We don't have very many people. We do have one other person at the DPS that is in the National Guard. I was looking to see if we had any more. So I know that we have these two employees. And in the past, this has only come up two other times, in 2003 and in 2006. So it doesn't come up that often either. So I just want to make sure that we're not coming and treating maybe people in different departments differently, that we do this for all of the employees moving forward, but it's not a common thing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion from council?
Your Honor.
Councilman Bliss?
Yeah, I think this is one of those easy decisions from us. It's the right thing to do. And I think anytime that we can show our employees how much we care in just their lives and the choices that we make. And in this case, we're not only showing our employee that we care and that we have their back, but we have the back of our military, which is, I think, an important statement as well. So I'm very supportive of this. And if it comes down to a point where we need to find budget savings because so many members of our staff are, you know, called up on active duty, I'm certain that the brain trust that we have on this call can find those savings to be able to take care of our employees.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? All right, I just, I agree with what's been said. I think this is great. Anything we can do to not only support our employees, but to support the men and women in the military who, whose job it is to keep this country safe, I'm all for it. So with that, no other discussion? Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilman Orbit?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Roebuck?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley? Vote yes, passes, thank you. Report number three, Community and Economic Development Director, the Resolution in Support of Participation in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. In October of 2019, city council approved the city's participation in the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, also known as the MEDC's, redevelopment-ready program, which is a state initiative to encourage and support local government in adopting best practices to incentivize private investment. The program measures and certifies communities that integrate best practices that promote transparency, predictability, and efficiency. At that time, staff submitted the required information to the MEDC for our baseline review. We have now received this baseline review, which was attached to the agenda. I want to take just a minute to acknowledge Giles Tucker. I don't think he has attended a city council meeting before, and he is the Economic Development Director and responsible for this application to the RRC. So he is here to kind of elaborate on this, and I'll save some of my comments because I don't want to take everything he is going to say. But I wanted to just introduce him to the community and to city council and give him a moment to talk about the RRC, after which case, staff recommends that city council adopt another resolution to just reaffirm our commitment, after you read through the benchmark report, to acknowledge the things that we need to work on and to know that that is going to take staff time and some consultant time. So Giles, do you want to elaborate on the report a bit?
Sure. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Oh, great. Well, thank you, Melissa. Yes, my name is Giles Tucker. I'm our Economic Development Supervisor for the city. My actual one-year anniversary with Madison Heights is actually Wednesday. So this is kind of nice. It's the first time I see you. But it's been a great year so far. We have a good, we have a good team in our building department, and the folks that we work with day-to-day. In October, when we put this, our first RRC resolution before council, that was just to agree to this evaluation that's before you. When you're looking at the evaluation now, those are the results of that. What we did internally is we provided documentation to the state of Michigan's economic, MEDC's, to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And based off that fact-finding and some documentation that we provided, we were given this evaluation. I think we're in very good shape thus far, as right off the bat, we have close to half of the certification requirements complete. We found out today, for example, that our capital improvement plan is not only adequate for their, for their standards, it's considered a best practice. So they, there's a lot of things that I can't, absolutely cannot take credit for that Madison Heights is doing an excellent job of. So passing this resolution today really just says we're committed to adopting these best practices. And staff is working on them now. So if there's anything in the report that you found, that you have any questions of, I'm happy to respond to those.
I agree. Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilman Clark?
I'd like to make a motion that city council approve the commitment to provide proper resources to complete tasks toward certification, understanding staff time and commitment involved. I recommend that we adopt the proposed resolution.
Thank you. Is there support? Second?
Support, Your Honor. Oh, sorry.
Support of?
Nope, Ms. Roebuck, bad time.
Your Honor. I'm sorry. Thank you. My apologies. All right. It has been moved and seconded to approve the Community and Economic Development, or the Resolution in Support of the Participation in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Mayor Portem Soltis?
Yeah, I had a question for the gentleman that, if economic development. Do we know, and this is a little different than what we're voting on, but I just wanted to know, are we keeping track of the vacancy rates, if any, within the city because of the COVID epidemic in terms of retail and commercial manufacturing?
Mr. Tucker, can you answer, please?
That's an excellent question. The challenge to, the challenge with tracking a commercial or industrial vacancy rate at the local level is it's easier to find, it's easier to track commercial and industrial coming in than leaving. The reason for that being is that when you come in, you fill out a certificate of occupancy or you register your business with the clerk. A lot of times when businesses leave, they don't close out that business license. They choose, they just don't renew it. So one way of measuring it is after a cycle is there, you determine how many business registrations weren't re-registered. So off the top of my head, I don't know our vacancy rates for those particular sectors. Some sectors of businesses in Madison Heights don't submit a business registration form. But what we are doing is, prior to, up to the beginning of the pandemic, we were building business contact, contact lists. We were providing newsletters. We were reaching out to businesses for local programs. And we're in fairly regular contact to check in with these businesses. So the short answer, I don't have a solid vacancy rate. The Chesapeake Group, the folks that helped Giffords Webster with our master plan, they are a type of organization that can better get those numbers. We do report those numbers, though, in some of our reporting to council. And the way that we get them is we actually reach out to our commercial brokers. So that's something that we do so, every so often. But off the top of my head tonight, I wouldn't be able to give you a definitive answer.
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
It's the follow-up. So when you do this type of survey thing, can you, can you give an estimate of what timeframe we're talking about? Is it six months from now, or when this is all over?
Are you, are you asking, are you asking to find the vacancy rate changes due to the COVID-19? Is that the question?
Right, right.
I think so, yes.
Right.
Okay.
But you said you were going to reach out to them, not necessarily now, but in the near future, with the brokers and things like that?
Yes, so I've been here for only one year, but what we did for, to get an idea of those rates, we did it around the same time that we do the State of the City address. So that was an annual thing. If it's the, if it's the desire for council to ask for that more often, really what I do is I reach out to my network of brokers that have access to that kind of data. And we were lucky enough to receive some of it earlier this year. But as far as a number that I have that captures the impact of COVID-19, I don't have that today.
Right, no, I understand. And I just was hoping for a snapshot, at least sometime in the near future.
Okay, great.
So I have a question related to that. So you said for the State of the City, so usually in what, December, January you're looking? Is it a lot of work to ask you to do that more frequently?
Yes, well, the way that we do it is, commercial and industrial brokers, they have access to higher-power tools like CoStar and LoopNet, and they pay for those services. So I asked them, and they're generous enough to provide that information. But it's not like I can get those estimates, given my current resources. And so it's just a matter of asking, and maybe I could ask more often.
Your Honor?
Thank you. Mr. Soltis, is that you again?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't mean to belabor the point. But I mean, once they're gone, then that's, you know, they're out the door, then it's kind of a new point. I mean, it's nice to have a snapshot and understand. But, and I know you have limited resources, but I think the point would be, or the goal at least, is to try and help them before they, they close the shop or close their business. Is there anything that works? I know it's a small department you have, but is there something that works that we're?
Yeah, so I mean, well, there are some things that we have already done. So between, I would say, March, April, May, between March and May, our Economic Development Group and us, we've, we've either been a part of issuing or raising just shy of around $300,000 for local businesses. So we've done that through our, we did around, I think it was $253,000 to, my memory serves me, 61 small businesses through the Oakland County Grant. And then we had our stand with Madison Heights Grant, where we used matching funds along with dollars that we raised locally. So we've done a combination of programs. We provide those programs and those availability of those programs using our lists. So we've been able to provide some assistance, typically a range around four, anywhere from $4,000 to $5,000 per grant. Some businesses have received more because they've participated in more rounds through Oakland County. So those have been some of our primary ways in which So those have been some of our primary ways in which I'm working to help stabilize the local business economy. But over time, I mean, that's not going to be enough. The, the reality is, is that as the economy opens up, we hope that they can recover, but we really need to find more creative ways to keep businesses afloat. I think one example of, of Madison Heights being innovative was our temporary outdoor seating ordinance. I really commend it, everyone for approving that. That really helped a lot of the restaurants get through. I also meet month or about, I would say bi-weekly with the other Main Street managers throughout Oakland County and we discuss ways in which we can help improve conditions for businesses like that. Right now, there's a few other communities that are kicking around in ordinance to allow outdoor seating even in the winter, provided it's covered and a bunch of other conditions. So we're constantly looking at different ways that we might be able to make business a little bit easier for local businesses, but it still remains a challenge.
It sounds like the, the smaller local business or local businesses are being affected as opposed to like manufacturing or the big box companies, you know, the mom and pop type of places, I guess. Is that, is that correct? And, and can you tell me the efficacy of when you disperse those grants, if, if it turned a company around where they're able to stay longer or were you able to track any of that?
Well, with the, the Oakland County grant and the, the local grant, there wasn't a tremendous amount of emphasis on tracking as far as what the, the, the funds were, were used for particular functions of the business. But because the money was made available from the Fed to the state, to the counties, the speed in which this money was available, it was really about getting it into the hands of the business owners as fast as possible. As far as saying the efficacy, you know, $4,000 or $5,000 is it, whether or not that's a meaningful amount of money to a local business is somewhat subjective and is also dependent on the size. So I would say it's meaningful if you are unable to operate at all and that gives you a month or two to weather the storm. I mean, overall, businesses like gyms, for example, have been impacted the most. They've only been recently able to reopen. And unless there's a program that they're already engaged in with like the Payment Protection Plan or others, there's only so much that a local government or even a county can do to, to help float those businesses.
So should we recruit or talk to our Senator Moss and then state representatives to see if they can do more?
Yes, um, I actually, it was in March, I, I attended a couple of webinars with the, with our state rep. He, it was mostly geared towards the small businesses, but I, but I tagged in and I think that they, our representatives thus far have tried to check in with business groups to see what they could, what they could do to help support them. But if council wants to keep that open communication up with, with our, our friends in the state house and the state senate, we can continue to provide feedback on what we're seeing on the ground. I'm sure that that would be helpful. It's very unprecedented time. So really, I really hope that we can get, I just really hope that we can get to work safely. But at the end of the day, we, we need to make sure that people's health are, are, is the highest priority at this point.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Mr. Corbett.
Yep. Just, just two quick items and follow-up to Mr. Saltus's point. I was in a, a meeting, Zoom meeting about a week ago and we were looking at exactly the same thing we were looking at the other end of it, the inventory. My interest was retail primarily. Take the following for exactly what it's worth, just simply a snapshot in time. There was not a feeling at the moment that retail, that there was a lot of availability, but I don't, we didn't discuss it, but I don't think anybody on the call thought for a second that that was really the case of what was going on. As Mr. Tucker was saying, you know, there's, there's a lag between when somebody goes out, when somebody makes a decision to go out of business, when they actually do it and then when anybody notices, which is part of the problem, I suppose. The second point is we do have in place a group in the city, the Chamber of Commerce, which does attempt to liaison between, well, at least certainly the retail and some of the softer industrial uses, but there's certainly a quality resource for us to tag to try and keep our pulse on this and maybe to answer the questions that Mr. Saltus was posing, what can we do now before, before people leave and so on? But I, I don't, I don't think we should forget about them. They, like everybody else, they kind of went off the grid for a while, but, but they're our strongest asset and ally and support with the business community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion regarding this? Sorry, am I? Not sure what that was. Okay, is there any other discussion from council? Okay. Seeing none. Seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? And before you do that, I'm just going to make the reminder, if everyone can please just keep yourself on mute unless, unless you're speaking. Thank you. Clerk, please go ahead.
Councilman Gettins.
Yes.
Councilor Roebuck.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Saltus.
Yes.
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Mayor Greifstein.
Oh, yes, motion passes. Thank you. Final report today, number four, Director of Public Services, the 2021 Road Commission for Oakland County Winter Maintenance Agreement. Mrs. Marsh, should I report?
Yes, provided for council's consideration is the agreement with Oakland County for the city to provide winter maintenance on 14 Mile from Campbell to Dequender, John R. from 14 Mile to the Red Run Drain and 12 Mile from Dequender to Campbell. This contract provides a 2.5% increase from last year, allowing $6,981 per mile for four lane and five lane roads and $8,610 per mile for six lane roads. The total amount of this contract is $40,971. Staff and I recommend that city council approve the contract and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Great, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilman Corbett.
Move that the council approve the recommended contract related to the 2020, 2021 Road Commission Winter Maintenance Agreement between the city of Madison Heights and Oakland County and, oh yeah, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Ms. Greifstein.
Councilman Gettins.
Yes, support.
Great, thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the 2020 and the 2021 Road Commission for Oakland County Winter Maintenance Agreement. Is there discussion? All right. Seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilor Roebuck.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Saltus.
Yes.
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Councilman Gettins.
Yes.
Mayor Greifstein.
Vote yes, motion passes. Thank you. Up next, section F, the bids awards. First up is for the police chief, purchase of Celebrate data recovery software. Mrs. Marsh, should I report?
Yes, the detective bureau and the special investigations unit are running into multiple cases where they need to obtain cellular phone data for suspects. Currently, electronic devices are sent to the crime lab for analysis. However, this process can take several months to a year. In order to expedite this process and to assist our officers with gaining data and evidence to solve crimes quickly and more efficiently, staff and I recommend that the city council approve the purchase of Celebrate data recovery software in the amount of $12,700. Funds are budgeted and available for this purchase.
Great, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilor Roebuck.
I move city council approve the purchase of the Celebrate data recovery software in the amount of $12,700.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilman Corbett.
Support.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the purchase of the Celebrate data recovery software. Is there discussion?
Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark.
So I see Chief Haynes is on here too, so maybe he can answer. Can you give me examples of what we might want to collect cell phones, like what sort of data we're collecting from cell phones, especially the current cases that we're working on that need this type of analysis? Chief Haynes.
Yes, Mayor, I may. There's, there's a whole cadre of cases that we have that involve cellphone data. One would be for armed robbery. We'd like to know where the cell phones were, you know, what kind of communication was happening between other parties, those sort of things. But there's a whole host of things I really don't want to talk about in the public forum, but basically to analyze data on cell phones in a quick manner so that we can locate suspects and locate victims as well quickly and efficiently to keep them safe.
Thank you. Any other questions, any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilman Bliss.
Yeah, so I was just curious in the vetting process on this one. The, the technology is, is great and it's pretty widespread, but I believe this is an Israeli company that right now, over the last, I think, three to four weeks has had a lot of protests against it because their technology was sold into Hong Kong and Belarus. So I, I don't know if we uncovered that and if we can make this motion contingent on a legal review of what's happening in that. I'd hate for us to contract with a, a company that has some challenges like that.
Mr. Sherman, could you weigh in on that, please?
I really can't. I'm not familiar with, with the background.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to, if it were council's wish, I'd be happy to look into the issue for the council.
Your Honor.
Your Honor. Go ahead, Mr. Corbett.
I'm probably just going to suggest what Ms. Roebuck was going to. Maybe modify the motion to, to refer it first to approval by the city attorney with respect to the, it's what I'm looking for, the integrity of the veracity of the company involved. If that, I don't remember, am I second on this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yes. Second agrees if the maker does.
Maker, maker agrees.
Okay. Mr. Sherman, does that work?
So, so is the, just to clarify for the benefit of council and those, those watching at home, the motion is to approve the purchase, subject to our review, subject to referring the matter to our office to determine the integrity or propriety of, of purchasing this software from this company.
That was the intention of my suggestion, Your Honor, and I suppose let us say that you found something untoward, untoward, you know what I mean? Then before entering into the contract, staff might send it back to council then for a second look, but otherwise, if there's nothing to it, then go ahead and.
This was your motion?
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do have a follow-up question, if I could, Your Honor.
Yes, please.
Chief, if you're still around, I, the only part of this that I, I found a little concerning, and maybe there were no alternates, how long has this been the case where you've had the wait months for evaluation of, of evidence from a phone?
It's really increasing as we go. As technology increases and the phones become more data specific and encrypted, it's caused a very big backlog with, with the county crime lab. And just so that, where we got this software in, in this company is through the FBI. It's the one that the federal government uses as well as Oakland County. So that, that's why we selected this company is they already have contracts and our office is already familiar with it.
How much of this do you have to, to get a search warrant for, for first, before you actually send it to this company for evaluation? Or are you allowed under certain circumstances to immediately evaluate the data?
We would still need either a search warrant or consent. We would need one or the other in order to do any type of, of cellphone data recovery, unless it was taken as evidence. And then again, we'd still need a search warrant, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think you're going to get consent. Well, I'd probably get it more often than I think, but, okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. So Chief Haynes, just to clarify, this company is being used by the FBI?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion from council? Nope, seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. That would be Mayor Protem Saltus first.
Yes.
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
I'm going to vote no, just because I still have some concerns about the types of data and, and all of the details where the data goes and how it's used. So I'm going to vote no this time.
Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Councilman Gettins.
Yes.
Councilor Roebuck.
Yes.
Mayor Greifstein.
I'm going to vote.
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. Item number two is the DPS Director, citywide LED streetlight conversion. Mrs. Marsh, should I report?
Yes, in 2015, city council approved the upgrade of 376 mercury vapor streetlights to LED technology. This project resulted in a cost and energy savings and eliminated the obsolete and inefficient mercury vapor lighting technology. At that time, the conversion of the remaining 1,386 high-pressure sodium streetlights in the city system did not provide a sufficient savings to be pursued. With this year's rate discussion, DTE presented the staff with updated cost and savings projected for a full LED conversion for the remaining streetlights in the city. This total conversion will cost $412,000. While this project was not included in the current budget, a savings of $84,359 per year combined with a rebate of $33,773 will result in a return of investment of 4.5 years and makes this a project worthy of pursuit. In addition, this conversion will improve the quality of light, safer roadways and neighborhood streets and a positive environmental impact with the energy reduction of 713,460 kilowatt hours annually. That equates to about 100 households per year. We did have a town hall meeting last week on Wednesday and the results were overwhelmingly positive. If council concurs to approve this conversion, two actions will be needed. First, city council would need to appropriate funding for this project by allocating the $412,790 to the general fund streets account 9280. This motion would require a super majority vote to pass. And second, city council will need to approve the purchase agreement between the city of Madison Heights and DTE in the amount of $412,790 and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you. So is this, this would be two motions that we would need in order to approve this? Okay.
Yes.
Great. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilman Bliss.
Let me see if I can get this right. I move that we approve an appropriation of funds into account number 101, 446, 92000 in the amount of $412,790.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Mayor Protem Saltus.
Support, please.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the allocation of funds. Is there discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilman Corbett.
Just a quick comment on the presentation the other evening, there was a Zoom public hearing or public information session. I thought it was very well done. I thought the, I think if you want to model on how to present potentially a complex idea to the city, pardon me, to the residents and to the community, this was the way to do it. It was very well laid out. It hit the key points and I thought it was, you know, I, I, I hope more people took an opportunity to see it on replay. Didn't appear that there were a lot of people actually at the time participating, but hopefully this is one of those things that you might informationally pick up afterwards. And I think it's still online, isn't it, Ms. Marsh? Yeah. So hopefully you can find it located and I know a couple of us have, have posted or made references to it in, in. made references to it in social media. So, very well done, very convincing, I thought. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Bliss.
Back in 2015, it was the right move to replace the lights that we did. I think it's the right move now. An ROI that has a payback period of four and a half years is incredible. It'll definitely impact short-term balance, you know, short-term fund balance. It's gonna impact for us, but, you know, we'll be getting that money back at $85,000 a year in savings, along with the one-time rebate of $33,000. So it makes sense financially. There's a safety element as well. Personally, as a homeowner with a streetlight at the bottom of my driveway, literally at the bottom of the driveway, how I've never hit it in a decade, I don't know. But I have one at the bottom of my driveway, so I was concerned about some of the light pollution that these brighter LEDs would have. And so I took the suggestion that was mentioned at the town hall and went over into Warren, where some of these exact same streetlights were put up. And it was not, it was not that bad. It was definitely clearer, but as you go, you know, 10, 15 feet away from the light, it wasn't a heck of a lot different than what I experienced with my own streetlight that's at the bottom of my driveway. And so I think that that hopefully will help ease anybody's concerns about light pollution. I know it eased mine, and the financial savings, along with the benefits to the environment, I think are incredible on this. It's one of those rare no-brainers that we get to vote on, and I will enthusiastically be voting yes tonight.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from council? Steve? Okay. Clerk, if you could take a roll call vote, and if council can remember that this is required a supermajority to pass this. Councilwoman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Councilman Giddings.
Yes.
Councilor Rorback.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Soltis.
Yes.
Mayor Grassley. I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Second would be the approval of the purchase agreement between the city and DTE. Wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilman Corbett.
I move that the council approve the purchase agreement between the City of Madison Heights and DTE in the amount of $412,790 and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the community.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark.
I'll support.
Great, thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, great. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Councilman Giddings.
Yes.
Councilor Rorback.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Soltis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bliss.
Yes.
Mayor Grassley. Oh, yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have the minutes, the approval of the minutes. Procedural question, can we combine and make one motion to approve both sets of minutes, or do we need to do these separately?
Your Honor.
Please.
I recommend that council handle them separately. There might be some changes to one and.
Okay.
To another.
All right, thank you. First up is the special city council minute, meeting minutes of August 24, 2020. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark.
I approve the special city council meeting minutes of 8:24, 2020.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Mayor Protem Soltis.
I support.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the special city council meeting minutes of August 24, 2020. Is there discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Councilman Giddings.
Yes.
Councilor Rorback.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Soltis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Grassley. I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the approval of the regular city council meeting minutes from August 24, 2020. What is the wish of council?
Councilor Rorback.
I move that we approve the regular city council meeting minutes of 24, 2020.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark.
Support.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of August 24, 2020. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilman Giddings.
Yes.
Councilor Rorback.
Yes.
Council, Mayor Protem Soltis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Mayor Grassley. Yes, motion carries. Thank you. All right, that is it for the agenda. So now I would invite council to provide any closing comments, starting with Councilman Corbett.
Thank you. Just one item related to the top of the agenda tonight. I know that the proclamation for Suicide Prevention Week was a little after the fact that, given how our meetings fell this time, it was from the sixth to the 12th was actually the Prevention Week. I've never asked before, but I don't know if it's difficult, perhaps on our website, reference could be made to it to maybe bring a little attention to it, along with maybe the hotline number, which is widely, widely used, I know, in the larger media. Perhaps it could be put on there and brought attention to it at least for a week or two, if we could post that possibly, Ms. Marsh. Other than that, I hope everybody's having a good fall, and hopefully things will start to get better, huh? Thank you. That's all I have on that right now this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Councilman Bliss.
Yes, Your Honor. This was a great meeting. I'm sad that we didn't get it live on Facebook, but I know we're gonna be posting it afterwards. Not a lot of contentious discussion, but it was really cool to have some of these technology upgrades and some long-term budget savings and some of the moves that we made. And so I was really happy with the discussion that we had, and I wanted to personally thank my peers for their support in doing a little bit more due diligence with that firm. Just in my quick search, you know, I ran a Google search, as I do with any vendor that we pull up, and all of the recent articles were about protests that were happening because of them. And so it definitely is worth our review prior to moving forward. Nothing to do with their technology, and they're one of the most reputable in the space. But of those recent articles, one from the MIT Technology Review from three weeks ago just gave me a little bit of pause, and it's something that I'm glad that we're able to have that review following an approval vote, because that allows us to still move fast, take advantage of the pricing that we have without having to hold things up and table the motion. So I look forward to seeing in our packet what the legal review says on it. I don't think that it's anything, but it's just something we should be aware of as a council. Finally, I'm really enthusiastic about our Arts Board's music event. The Strolling Festival is aptly named Trail Tunes 2020. It's a socially-distanced music festival. The band submissions that we got from all of the musicians were phenomenal. It was really, really tough for the subcommittee and the board to choose. Ultimately, we have 14 featured artists that'll be along the trail, and then we'll have a spotlight area with artists, you know, whether they're up-and-comers, whether, you know, they're just looking for a place to play. We wanted to reserve a spot for people to just, you know, even show up with a guitar, and so we're really excited about that. It's gonna be a fun event at the same time. The Friends of the Madison Heights Library is doing their book sale as kind of a pop-up book sale, and then we're excited to invite the ECC's Bloom Project to be able to do a native plant sale. There's also gonna be other community groups there, and just a lot of fun for everybody. And so I encourage everybody that's on this call or watching it after the fact, please go to the event. It's on the Arts Word Facebook page right now. Share it, post about it, comment, and invite anybody you know who you think may enjoy an event like this. It's been far too long since live music was available and doing it in this safe way. You know, masks will be required in any performing area, anywhere there were this congestion. Social distancing is a requirement there, but it's outside, and it's as safe as possible, and it's gonna be a great way to enjoy that music. Finally, I just want to thank my other subcommittee members for that project. It's a really big deal to be able to get it to this point and to get that high caliber of bands, and so I just wanted to give a shout out to the other subcommittee members who worked on it with me. Vita Palazzolo, first and foremost, my co-chair, and then Steve Dombrowski and Jason Theodora for all of their hard work, and their hard work that'll continue until the event on October 3. So thank you, everybody. I look forward to seeing every single one of you, if you can. If you're not out of town, please come out and enjoy some music with me and my family. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilor Rorback.
I just wanted to echo what Councilwoman Bliss said about the 3rd, October 3rd, what was it called, the Trail Tunes? I like that a lot. I can't get out of my head. There's a kid's song called Truck Tunes that my kids really like, so I keep thinking that when I hear it, but it's great. I'm very excited about it. And I'm especially excited about the Environmental Citizens Committee Native Plant Sale that's going on that same day, also at Civic Center Park. And the, one of the things I'm really excited about that is there are gonna be, it's gonna be an opportunity for people to re-envision your home gardens and to think about planting more pollinator-friendly and water gardens and things like that that are going to help each individual home become more environmentally friendly. I spent this last weekend pulling out all of the, all the hostas, lilies, and rose bushes out of my own front garden in preparation for planting a whole new set of pollinator-friendly native plants in my front garden. I'm thrilled about it, and I recommend anybody who's interested in going to that, if you go to the Facebook page or to the city website, I think you can find the link to the items that you can purchase there, the types of plants, and you can start making a plan for your plants. And then, and I want to thank especially Crystal Fox, who was our brand-new member on the Environmental Citizens Committee. She brought this forward, and we were able to put it into place right away. So I'm excited about that, and I appreciate her work. I also am really thrilled about the Friends of the Library. They have, as Ms. Bush mentioned at the beginning in public comment, the Friends of the Library has really started to pick up steam. They have some beautiful sweatshirts and t-shirts that are available, and I recommend anybody who wants to support that, do that, to purchase one of those to support the Friends of the Library. And I just want to thank everybody who has stepped up that wants to do, wants to do good and wants to help in this city in terms of the quality of life programs, because that's the kind of thing that makes Madison Heights special and will continue to make us special. I also want to say that the Human Rights and Equity Commission met for the first time since our last meeting, and we appointed our chair, Quinn Wright. I'm thrilled that Mr. Wright is the chair of that commission, and we started to set some priorities and discuss what we are going to be doing with that commission. And it is, there's a lot of work to be done and a lot of conversations to be had, and so our meeting went on for quite a long time, but I look forward to the next one, because we are going to have, I think, really important conversations in that, in that commission. And finally, I want to remind everybody about the DDA, the Downtown Development Authority. Their Restaurant Week is, Madison Heights Restaurant Week is September 20 through 26. And I am, I have not eaten out, I've had takeout a few times since March, but I haven't eaten out in a restaurant except for one time for my 15-year anniversary back in July. But I tell you what, I'm looking at some of these, these options on the Restaurant Week, and it looks pretty good. So I just want to encourage everyone to make sure you get out there and support our local Madison Heights restaurants over the course of that, all the time, but especially the September 20th through 26th. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Mr. Sherman?
Yes, Your Honor. On a personal note, I'm very pleased to announce the birth of Jeff and Fanny Sherman's second grandchild, a little girl who was named after my, our mother who left five years ago. And so congratulations to the happy parents, Stephanie and Bobby Decker, and wishing them all the best, as well as the new baby. And my son and daughter-in-law are expecting this week, between now and Saturday. So we're expecting a bumper crop this month, and very excited about all of it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to the Sherman family.
Thank you.
Mrs. Marsh.
I had several announcements, but council very nicely took care of all those. So I will just add that LED presentation is posted online. It's also on the Facebook page, so if anybody has any questions about that. The project is projected to take only six months. They can work no matter what the weather. So hopefully by spring, all of these lights will be installed. And the number one question that I've been getting are, we already have LED lights. Are they gonna be replaced? Nope, this is only to replace the current high-pressure sodium lights. So if you currently have an LED light, nothing is gonna change about that. So I appreciate council's support of that. I think it will be a very good move financially and environmentally for the city. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Clerk, do you have anything for us, Steve? Thanks, Ms. Rorback.
I do, thank you. Okay, I just wanted to remind the voters that our election is coming up on November 3. We're in the process of anticipating getting our absentee ballots in our office shortly. Look for those the last week of September, around the 20th or a little bit afterwards. Just see those in your mailbox. If you need an application for a ballot, you can fill one out online, or you can call us and we can send you one. Please feel free to drop it off or send it back in the mail, whatever you feel comfortable with. And also to let you know that the city is participating in the Secretary of State's program to have prepaid, posted on your return ballot envelope. So it will not, if you use our envelope, you will not require posted on that if you go through the postal service. However, you are welcome to drop it off in our, at our office in person or in a drop box behind City Hall. That's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilman Giddings.
Yes, Mrs. Mayor. Just on the light situation, a couple of years ago, we replaced the lighting on Gardenia from Stevenson to John R., and I think those lights are doing a great job. They no longer hang all the way over the street. They're on single poles, and they seem to be working out fine. On a personal note, I just have to mention this. I lost my dad 59 years ago today, and I just want to say I still remember him. He was a fine man, and he'll always be missed. Thank you, Mrs. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Councilwoman Clark.
Yes, well, my colleagues did an amazing job of highlighting all the exciting stuff that's going out around the city. So mine will be short. The only thing I think we missed out on is September 17. The Madison Heights Citizens United Group will be hosting another conversation called Recognizing Your Racism, and that'll be at Civic Park in the pavilion right behind the firefighter station.
Mayor Protem Soltis.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I want to just make sure that the drivers out there are be wary of the bicycle riders like myself, please. Again, everybody seems to be in kind of a hurry, and they do kind of a slow roll to a stop sign, but just, you know, be a little cautious, see low speeders, but, you know, it's, nothing is worth going that fast and having some type of accident. Also, I shot nine holes at Red Oaks Golf Course with my younger son. It's, you know, it's a fantastic place to golf. I haven't golfed in a few years, but it was a great course. It's a shorter course, you know, with a lot of par threes. It's a shorter course, you know, with a lot of par threes, which helped me, but evidently not in the end. I can't explain how my 16-year-old son beat me by two strokes. But, you know, get out there while you can before winter comes. The county is very proactive in their COVID precautions in place. You know, even when we brought in the cart, they wiped it all down, and they have it coming in this way and out that way. So they do a really good, great job. And that's all, thank you.
Great, thank you. So, yeah, I've been out on the bike more, and I've been walking it, I've been driving. And I feel like, I don't know if it's because there's more people working from home, so there seems to be less traffic, but there seem to be a lot of drivers who are misjudging the color of the light and seem to be going through on reds. And they're also missing the stop signs, perhaps because they're looking at their phones. But there were a couple of major intersections, and I have actually asked the police if they could just have extra police presence. You know, it just, you need to be, you need to be wary of everybody who's out there, walkers, riders, other vehicles. So thank you for mentioning that. I've also been contacted by a few residents concerning some of our ordinances, and I'm working with the DDA now. We're working on economic development and marketing and promoting our downtown area. And one of the things I'd like us to do is sort of review some of our ordinances. I know we did this last year with the noxious weeds, and we did it just a few months ago with the Hen Ordinance. You know, the city put in, put in place ordinances that some of them, they just might be a bit outdated, that want us to take a look at different things like height restrictions and those types of things. So just, I know the staff is busy, but if I could add it to your list of things to look at, that would be really, really appreciative. With respect to the Restaurant Week, it's coming up next week. And, you know, if you are, you know, if you're not comfortable going out to the restaurants, I believe most, if not all of them, also are offering specials for their carryout. But take a look and share with your friends and family who are outside the city. We have a lot of restaurants, a lot of them, people don't even know. Only people who are in the city seem to know about, so please share with your friends and family about those. Thank you, everyone, for coming on tonight. The time is 8:42. Our next meeting will be Monday, the 28th. There is no more business, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, good night.